Councilmember Thorson?
Here.
Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Mayor Furlong?
Here. Motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? Now, are all those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. So we have two topics and I'll turn it over to City Manager.
Start.
Thank you, Mayor Furlong and Councilmembers. The first topic tonight is the Arts and Culture Commission's Snowman Sculpture Initiative. The Commission's been discussing the possibility of creating a public sculpture program since last fall. And, you know, I'm just gonna let Tom tell you about it. Tom Sonic is a Commissioner on the Arts and Culture Commission and I think he's got a presentation for you.
Thank you, City Manager.
Welcome, Tom.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having me. I'm not sure if you're familiar with any part of this project that we've been working on, but if not, I will give you a brief summary of what's been happening. The mayor actually had had some conversations last year with the company that makes these sculptures and they had done, this is the same company that did the sculptures of the Peanuts characters around St. Paul, and they've done countless other similar type sculptures and city projects relate, similar to this all across country. They happen to be based in the Twin Cities area and so the mayor had met with them and talked about this and they happen to have a snowman mold already. So the idea was born, we had, I think, had talked about this a long time ago as well, about doing something like this in North St. Paul. And now the reality of the situation is that we've done some more digging, we've done some more research and we understand what it would take to do something like this. So I want to share a little bit about that with you. We would love to try and execute a project like this for the city of North St. Paul. If you can see on your sheet there, there are various benefits for doing something like this. We think, you know, I think obviously the biggest thing is kind of this attention, civic pride, gathering people and buzz around North St. Paul. It's a perfect timing too, given the downtown revitalization, everything that's happening with the city. So there's so much good going on in North St. Paul right now. This is just one of those things that'd be sort of a cherry on the top and I think a lot of the work of the Arts Commission is trying to achieve that. So...
And I just want to mention, Tom, that this was brought up years ago in regards Park and Rec. We had talked about it.
Oh, okay. Wasn't aware of that.
So it's kind of, you know, stirring, but then when I saw that company, and they actually do something like this, because back in the day when we were looking at this, we didn't know where to look.
Yeah.
Who does this?
Yeah.
So it was kind of interesting. We did find out that it was from a company in Minnesota.
Right here in the Twin Cities.
Locally and they make it. So, go ahead.
I think there'd be a lot of great benefits to doing this. Some of these things are listed on the page that you have in front of you. You might even consider some of your own. Now, what we're thinking is something pretty modest in North St. Paul. If we were to get 10 of these snow people done, we're calling, we're calling them Snowies. They're Project Snowy. I think it would be fantastic if there were 10. And so what that means is that we have businesses who are willing to sponsor and pay for these things. But in order to help entice the businesses along, what we are hoping is that the city can put up some seed money to help get the thing started. Even though there is an existing mold for the snowman figure, it requires an $11,500 refurbishment to have that thing ready to go. Once it's ready to go, we can order as many of these snow people that we want. If it's one, if it's three, if it's 10, whatever. And we can keep adding as we go, as needed. But so when we were originally looking at this, we had it broken down with the 11,000 broken out among 10 snow people and what the cost would be per business if they wanted to buy one of these things. And then if it were, say, five, if we only had five or something, the price would just keep going higher for any business that wanted to sponsor and own one of these things. So what we're hoping to do is get some city participation to help front the cost of the refurbishment and then potentially even the cost of one of the Snowy sculptures itself. So if we have, if we front the cost for the refurbishment and one sculpture, then that sculpture lives wherever the city wants it to. Whether it's right here, in the council chambers, outside the front door, in a park, wherever we want to put it, we can put it. And that would just be ours to keep. No, so that, so the setup cost is $11,500. To add one statue to that would be $16,350. So that would be the total upfront cost. That would make it possible for any business that's interested in having one of these things to have the full cost to them, so full sponsorship cost, would be $5,000. So that's all, any one of our local businesses or individuals, for that matter, if they wanted to have one of these things, they pay $5,000. They get to choose the artist. That includes the artist's fee, because there's a $1,000 artist fee that's worked into that. And so however the thing is painted and designed, that, they would be able to choose the artist and the design and keep the statue at their place of business or wherever they want. We have different sponsorship levels that we're looking at as well. So say if somebody wanted to put in $2,500, then we could say, "Great, you can choose the artist and the art and this can live on your property for three months." And then it goes into the general public. If you want to have a lower sponsorship fee, say $500 or $1,000, same thing. Now it lives on your property for two weeks and then it goes into the general public. So we would have to figure out from all those lower level sponsors, how many additional snow people we could afford, build those. We would have them stay on the sponsor's property for whatever was pre-arranged and then after that, they could be auctioned off. Any cost from the auctioned snow people would come back to the city. So that's a key element in this. So whatever upfront cost that the city pays, much of it could be recouped. I can't make any promises on this and I won't. But any, any snow people that aren't paid for outright, where there's full sponsorship by business, that we can auction those off, all that cost would come back to the city. Any other sponsor fees that we might collect or raffles, if we were to do something like that, so sponsorship fee. So if we wanted to say, "Project Snowy," so all of these things are brought to you by Anchor Bank, whatever. If Anchor Bank wanted to throw in a thousand bucks so that their name is on all of the advertisement, all the branding for this whole thing, that thousand bucks comes back to the city. Another idea we had is having raffle tickets for the entire population, all the residents. So say you want to put in five bucks, 10 bucks, whatever it is into a raffle to have one of these things sit on your property, you could, we could have Public Works, hopefully, deliver it to your driveway or your front yard for a week, right? So now you're winning the chance to have one of these things on your property. They're very Instagrammable, very, very fun for people to take pictures. I can just imagine these things around the car shows, around parade events, things like that. So any of that money, though, would come back to the city. Now, the city can't hold raffles, but nonprofit organizations can. So there's potential that we could work with a nonprofit organization within the city, whether that's History Cruisers or the Historical Society or some other nonprofit. We could work with them to help sponsor the sale of the raffle tickets so that we could do something like that. Still more legwork to figure that whole thing out if we were going to do that. But sponsorship is a little bit more straightforward and auctioning these Snowies after they're made would be more straightforward. So I'll pause there to see if there are any questions, but happy to tell you anything that I know so far about these things. We have had Hart Johnson, who is a co-owner of the company that makes these, has attended a couple of our Arts and Council Commission meetings via phone and Zoom, so...
Other cities have done this, like Roseville. I've seen Rose, the giant rose and I've seen it around Roseville Mall and...
Right. Roseville is probably one of the closest examples of another city that's done this and they're very open and willing to work with us on our project as well.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, as the liaison, I've had a really wonderful experience watching the commissioners really thoroughly think out this project. From the financial standpoint, from the standpoint that they are a new commission, they want to make a really large statement with this commission and I think it's one of those things that our community needs, as he said during the revitalization period. I think that also to benefit the artists here, I think that's just something we haven't had. So it'll bring a lot of extra, you know, like you said, Instagrammable. I think it'll put us on the map, just as we have hoped to. We've also got plenty of volunteers and folks to help out with some of these projects and the company's been extremely supportive in providing any assistance and any questions that they have, they've been extremely supportive. But I'm in favor of, you know, really funding this project, hopefully in full. I think, you know, what better way than the city to make that statement?
One other point that I wanted to make, I thought this was interesting. So Hart Johnson, one of the co-owners of Tivoli Two, that's the name of the company that makes these, he says, "So if you're a business, for example, and you just want to get one of these statues, they're about six foot tall, and you want to have one of these things made, whether it's a snowman or whatever it is, it would cost you about $15,000 just to have one." And so what we're offering to all of the businesses in town is that they could get it done for $5,000. So it's a great thing. It's something that they can have forever, sitting outside, they can have it branded according to their business, whatever they want. I'm sure you've seen these things around town with the Peanuts characters where they have, whether it's the Minnesota Wild or the Banks or whatever, they have their own branding right on the character.
So not everyone's going to look like this?
No, no, no.
So...
They can look any way you want them. So artists can, what we, what we would do is have a call for artists and artists would present ideas that they have, design ideas, and then those design ideas would be selected. And they would be selected by the sponsors, if you're a full sponsor. Or if not, we were thinking that we would have shared commissions, you know, all, different commissions being involved to vote on other designs for the remaining ones.
In the actual art part, could be an event of itself?
It could, yeah. We had some discussion about possibly hosting this downtown somewhere during a car show where we could see artists at work, working on the statues, doing some of the painting right there. There's also, you've probably seen these around town, where you've got a, you know, Snoopy that's got a, I don't know, different hat on, a baseball hat or something. I know Saints, I think, have some of these things. Those things can be done. You can add, I guess, accessories to the characters. The artists can do it themselves if they know what they're doing and Tivoli Two, the company, will work with them to do that, to help execute it. Or if somebody just says to Tivoli Two, "We want you to do it. We will pay extra for that," you can do it that way as well. So that's when you see the ones that look a little different.
How are they weathered?
Really well. I mean, I think you can go around town and see any of these things that have been out there for a long time. Yeah, I think they handle the weather really, really well.
During the winter.
In the winter.
Yeah. Get cold.
I know Joe's Sporting Goods, that's another one where I saw they have a Snoopy character out there. But the, the characters, they're about six feet tall. I think it's some kind of resin material. But then the base is made of concrete and that adds a lot of weight. So overall, they weigh about 600 pounds, so people can't walk off with them.
People can't tip them over.
Right, yep.
Any other questions?
I would just add, at the next regular meeting on June 21st, I believe, if you recall, Finance Director Winnick talked about, and actually it sounded Consent Agenda Tonight, a new policy about kind of our cash on hand and anything that would exceed that would be available for some one-time purchases. It's, I'm not remembering the exact figure. It's somewhere in the neighborhood of, I believe, $340,000 for 2022. That would be available for one-time expenditures. Each department kind of put together kind of a wish list and I had added this to the wish list to be discussed at the city council meeting when this comes up in two weeks.
So that's when we would vote on?
Funding.
Funding part.
That's when you could, sure. Yep.
Councilmember Cole?
Tom, I love it. I think it's, I think it's great. I'm fully on board from a support standpoint. Question on timing. I'm looking at the dates that are kind of here on the flyer.
Yeah, it's tight.
That was my only concern is that, I know you hate to look at postponing it till next, till next spring, but I didn't know if that had come up in any of your conversations that if I understand what "Bear Snowy at Car Show" means, that means that would be Snowy's unpainted?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, and then, you know, that's, that's the end of August. So...
Yep.
From a traction standpoint, we're really only getting about a month out of them from downtown visibility. That was my, that was my only, my only thought, but I'm fully supportive of the idea. I love it. I think it's great.
Yeah, so the schedule is tight for this year. It's doable, though, and Hart Johnson has said, he's already given us the date that if you want these things, August 26th, here's when I need to know. And he, and again, it could be, we could start by having one, two, four, whatever. You know, we don't have to have all of them right away if we wanted to kind of kickstart and, or just start building up the Snowies on a slower pace. And then next year, maybe we have them all on parade or something.
And that was kind of where I was going is you kind of get it kicked off now, but let it build into the following summer so that, you know, either more can participate or if those who choose to, you know, have the Snowy for a period of time, it can live in front of other...
Yeah.
You know, other locations, you know, it just gives it a longer period. That was, that was my only question.
Sure, yeah. And it depends, you know, I mean, September 16th, we have it as being in the Fall Roundup Parade, but, you know, there are other things that happen after that. It's another reason to bring people downtown after the car show wraps up and the, in the end of the summer, you know. So maybe there are events where we have, have these things on display or on parade at that time.
I know downtown St. Paul had, when all the Snoopies were out in the whole community, they brought them all downtown and people would come down there on the weekends and...
Yeah.
I mean, they had a lot of people that just came down and watched and toured the...
Yeah, yeah. So I think, you know, once we get going with, I mean, the, the ideas are endless as far as what you could do with sort of programming with them, you know what I mean? So... But the main thing is to have some kind of seed money to get started. So, otherwise we were looking at, talking about businesses, it would be, you know, it was going to be a much higher cost to each business to have.
It would limit the amount of businesses.
Yeah, it just seemed cost prohibitive then. You're not going to have, you know, any smaller business. I think this puts it more in something that's doable for an independent small business to potentially make it happen.
I think it's great. I think it's something that add a lot of art to the downtown.
Yeah, it'd be a very visible thing and...
Or parks or wherever.
Hopefully attract a lot of attention. Yep, parks, businesses, you know, and it's something that I'm sure we'd get a lot of good press out of that type of thing as well. So, well, you know how to find me. If you have any questions, happy to answer any questions about this anytime. I really appreciate everybody considering this project.
So it looks like the 21st is when we...
The 21st, we might know something?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Your son feels better.
Thank you.
City Manager Stark?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next topic is, you know, I'd call it a continuing discussion on the community center. I don't know that any one discussion is going to resolve everything, so I think, in my opinion, this should be kind of an ongoing thing until you have all the information, you feel like you need to make a good decision. I'm going to try to not do too much talking to give you all as much opportunity as you can. My goal here has been to gather as much information as possible so you can make an informed decision. Some of the things that, so on April 19th, I had given you a memo talking about some costs. And, you know, I just reiterate, even the short-term costs to keep the facility up and running for six to 18 months would likely be a million dollars plus or minus. And the, just getting the rooftop parts and I, I need to double-check that figure with Ron, but the parts for the rooftop should have been already ordered because of supply chain issues. So we're, we're really pushing it as it is. Cohoro Volleyball has a lease that expires on December 31st and their absence would make the building about 75% vacant. Some of the things I've looked at is other suburban community centers. I, I'm not going to tell you that this is an all-inclusive list. It's the best list I could make. We reached, I reached out to my peers to try to identify where other community centers existed. If you look at the list, you'd see that it's primarily bigger communities. Moundsview does have one and Moundsview is a very similar size to North St. Paul. Moundsview, though, has 5.5 Parks and Recreation staff that are dedicated to just Parks and Recreation. That is something that North St. Paul does not have. So, you know, the conclusion I've kind of drawn is that the staffing would really need to be increased by probably four to five employees in order for the city to run a facility. You know, certainly YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, other entities can run a facility. From, and this is more anecdotal, I don't have a lot of great evidence, but it, it seems to me that the YMCA's of the world are actually scaling back their participation in municipal community centers rather than expanding. I've heard about more closing in recent years than opening. There were questions about the library lease. I can tell you that these documents were hard to find. They weren't really in the city files anywhere that I could find. You know, that's, in your regular meeting, you're going to be talking about kind of transitions and turnover and those things. It's really important to have good filing that's consistent from person to person and I don't know that that was the case. Ultimately, I was able to get all the documents from, from our law firm and that's the source and I've attached all of those. So there are, one, two, three, four, seven documents attached that relate to the lease. You know, it really goes back to, I would say, really, Document B 2004, when Ramsey County approved a resolution for $750,000 in costs for the site construction. And then the, there's a memo from the North St. Paul City Manager recommending approval of that lease. And this, this whole timeline is kind of full of starts and stops that I can't really explain. Another six years goes by before the county signs a joint agreement for the lease that went unsigned by North St. Paul for another three years. And in that, the county paid for roughly $750,000 in construction costs and the county paid for $517,000 of leasehold improvements, which included a lot of things, including, from what I can tell, even books were included in that $517,000. The city was going to lease that to the county annually for 20 years, with an optional renewal for 20 more years. The big question is, when did that 20 years start? And I don't, I can't give you a great answer for that, even after reviewing these documents. In the event of the termination of the lease, North St. Paul would have to repay the construction costs plus, and I put this in quote, "all furnishings, the equipment and the collection." I don't know exactly what that means. It could be the $517,000 that I referenced in addition to the $750,000. In 2010, the document was recreated and ultimately was approved, executed by North St. Paul in 2013. Finally, in 2018, an amendment to the lease happened and it was, this time it was signed by both parties at that time. So that was a good document. In that 2018 amendment, it identified the original date of the lease agreement as 2010. I think that's important because this is the first document that everybody signed and it's the, it's the, well, let me rephrase that. It's the first document that everybody signed in a short time period and it's the last document that everybody signed. And if it said the original, it identified the original date of the lease agreement in 2010, to me, that tells me that's probably when the 20 years started. But that's my opinion. I'm sure everybody's got a different opinion on this. Sorin doesn't really have a, his, his legal opinion is that it's, it's so complicated that it ultimately would probably, one of two things would have to happen. Either the city of North St. Paul and Ramsey County would have to have like just an agreement that says, "Well, really this started in 2005," or the less favorable would be that it would have to be decided in court. And that's nothing any of us want. So that's what I can tell you about the lease.
We do have a meeting set up with the library.
Yes.
To get an answer for that.
I don't know if that will, if we'll get an answer for that or not at that meeting.
We do have a meeting with, with them.
Yep. So the mayor and I did meet with the library director on May 13th. He's new to the position. He did indicate his support of satellite library branches. He thought that was a good thing. He, he felt like he had that support from the entire organization. I, I've got a blank in here, but there are seven Ramsey County satellite locations. North St. Paul's and one others are owned by somebody other than the county. So it's a little bit of an exception. The library director seemed interested in the prospect of expanding the county's use of the building to provide additional programming. He felt like it was a well-utilized branch and there, if North St. Paul was open to an expansion, he certainly would be. Again, he couldn't speak on behalf of the county board or anybody else. And then the mayor and I are going to be meeting next week with the library director and then the director of property management for Ramsey County.
To hopefully get an answer for that.
I can keep rolling or we can, we can talk about each heading separately. I'll just keep rolling for now. Nobody asked me this. This maybe was just my curiosity. I asked Wold Architects, who really specializes in government and institutional buildings, whether they thought the building could be kind of surgically demolished, where we would keep portions we wanted, get rid of portions that were seemingly less usable. And they went out, looked at the building, looked at the blueprints and they felt like demolishing the community center but keeping the library intact was possible. That would be a cost of $3.1 million in their estimation. They thought demolishing the entire community center was probably a $1.3 million project. So obviously you're spending a lot of money on option A to, to build kind of the walls and the infrastructure that the library would need to be a standalone facility. And then option C was their estimate of demolishing the community center and then constructing a new library on the same site. a new library on the same site at $4.8 million. And finally, RT Luzek, the owner and operator of Kokoro, asked to meet with me, and he wanted me to convey his continued interest in either buying the building outright, in which case he said he would retain the library as a tenant, or continuing to lease the area he currently occupies. As I said, the lease currently ends in December. He said extending that until April or May would be very helpful to him, because his season doesn't end in December. It ends in the spring. And then he said he would also be open to the idea of leasing only the court area of the community center for a longer term to serve as a second location to the facility he is currently constructing elsewhere. The school district had indicated a willingness to participate, but I was not able to get any update from them on their continued interest. So, really, what I'm...
They still part of the equation.
They certainly could be. So, like I said, I just wanted to keep providing you information and find out from you if the... What other information you need, so we can gather that and bring that to you, so you can make a good decision.
I think one of the biggest decisions is that lease, meeting with them next week and determining when that lease ends.
The Ramsey County one?
So, I just... I wanna, if I can, I just wanna pause and thank you. I've been asking, in my short tenure up here, I've been asking for a detailed list, and I think we all recognize that bits and pieces existed. So, John, I just wanna thank you for taking the time and putting it together. We're not to the goal line yet. We haven't established the exact date, but at least we've got several documents in chronological order. So, I just... I wanna thank you for that piece of it, 'cause I know that last time it was presented, that was kind of my line in the sand before I was willing to move forward, was a better understanding. So, thank you for addressing my concerns.
Of course.
Councilmember Wong, any...
Not at this moment. Maybe come back to me.
So, moving forward, I... We're trying to get as much information we have here. We don't know about the school district, but they are... Could be a viable piece of this equation. The library is showing that they have strong interest, and they would like to possibly expand. We've got Kokoro Volleyball, who potentially would want to lease the... Just the court area, you know, allowing for all the other tenants to be part of that. You know, we need to either have like a focus group or something, where we get, you know, people, you know, maybe some residents together and council members and really come up with a plan. Once we get all that in... Once we get, you know, the information from the library board of what their intent on that lease is, and also the school district, you know, because school districts potentially could take a lot of this. And then I think we have another resident who's also inquired in regards to possibly... Mario inquired about also potentially programming, something down there. So, I don't know what you think about some sort of focus group or... Is that what you call it, a focus group, or would it be a...
Task force, maybe?
Task force, or... Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, I think the big key is this is county leasing thing, you know? Getting that figured out, and then you can probably proceed from there. Talking about the years left on the lease. I was surprised that the school district was interested. That was new to me. Makes sense.
No, we need to get the repairs done...
Yeah.
...sooner than later.
So, I guess the way that I'm viewing this is I look back at... We determine the extent of the lease to fulfill the obligation to the county. Once that's defined, and that, fingers crossed, that could be as soon as end of month. You know, we have a tenant, and a tenant has a signed lease with an exit date or a renewal date. We have yet to open the facility up to notification to see if anybody else is interested. We've had people approach us, knowing that we were going through some conversation with the existing tenant that have expressed an interest in backfilling. We've yet to open the space up to the public for rent. So, the piece that I look at is, we determine the date, and then we determine the go-forward piece from a repair standpoint. And I would go so far as to recommend for consideration that the entire community center be turned over to the EDA and let the EDA manage it, and it's no longer the responsibility of city council. The city hasn't been necessarily a phenomenal steward at keeping the building where it needed to be, and I think if it turned it over to an EDA who, you know, can put a little bit more focused time and energy into that, as well as take the time and energy to search for suitable tenants, et cetera, it would then take some of the workload off of council as well as off of city manager.
City manager, do you know of other communities that...
I don't know of any that use the EDA to run the facility. I do know... I shouldn't say I know. I believe that some create like a nonprofit entity that would run it, or at least participate in running it.
So, that's another option.
Yeah, I think where it gets fuzzy, if it remains a community center, then I think it falls on the responsibility of council. But I don't think anybody is moving forward with the thought process of opening a community center back up. It's a building the city owns, and we would have tenants in the building, and I don't... And it would then not necessarily be up to the council to manage said tenants or building.
And so, to me, that's an extremely helpful statement. You know, what I'd like to really... Well, what the city should work on, I think, going forward with the five of you, is almost like a Venn diagram of where all of you sit on this. That position that, you know, the city shouldn't probably be in the business of running a recreation... We'll call it a recreation center. You know, if that's something that all five of you share, then get it off the table and start eliminating options. And then, once there... You've eliminated some, the leftover options, you can start to diagram that out and see where there is political, you know, consensus of where you can go.
Councilmember Therson?
Well, it hasn't operated as a community center since 2012. We've had tenants in there since then. And again, the first tenant was the school district. We have... I have a copy of the lease. We discussed it last time. They were paying far less than what our current tenant is paying. You know, and I think that's a huge part of this, too. I mean, have we actually put up a "for sale" sign and publicly advertised, "Hey, it's for sale"? I thought at one point, we engaged in a realtor, and he was, you know, putting it out there. I'm all supportive of that, if there's other interested parties, 'cause I feel the best option for us is to just sell it. You know, it's an influx of cash for us. It... Then the property goes on the tax rolls, then we've got revenue coming in for utilities. I mean, it's just... To me, it's a no-brainer. But to go back to the library portion, first of all, you know, in your memo here, you're stating that there's some discrepancy on the construction costs and the, you know, whatever they're calling, the build-out and books and stuff. So, it's $700 and... Where's that number?
The construction cost was $749.
$749, but then... And an additional $500 and some thousand? Well, if you look on these attachments here, is it... I don't know how it's loading. I just had it up. It specifically says in the last whereas, this isn't the agreement, this is on page... This is the Amendment B here, or the resolu... It's the original resolution that was signed. It's Ramsey County Commissioners dated 2004. The last whereas reads, "The estimated total project cost is $749,889, consisting of $517,889 in construction costs, $200,000 of library collection, and $32,000 for technology." I mean, to me, that's crystal clear. The total construction cost is $749,889.
And which document was that?
B? You got it marked as a B resolution? Okay.
And again, we're gonna meet with the board next week, so we have to figure that number out.
So, my point is, that's not... To me, that's crystal clear. I mean, where's this additional $500,000 coming from? Okay.
It's coming from later documents. That's the problem. I think the later documents supersede the previous ones.
And we haven't advertised going out to get tenants in the building either.
Correct.
Because we've had tenants... Well, basically, Kokoro has been there since, you know, again, when has that started? That was 2017 is when they kind of officially took over, or is it...
I mean, even saying right now, since we determined that we weren't gonna sell it, we haven't gone out to advertise that we're gonna have tenants in there.
Current tenant.
Right. We have an end date for the current tenant.
And also, for the previous time, we weren't really, you know, looking broadly for a new tenant. It was, do we sell it, or do we continue this on with this current tenant? So, that was kind of what we were deciding on previously. There wasn't the larger note to the public.
So, if I could... I'm just gonna... I still had more. I mean, if we have time, I'd like to... And I don't know why we would look for a new tenant when we already have a tenant. I guess that's where I'm confused, but...
We have a tenant with an end date.
So, and I guess I'm gonna interrupt you.
If I could just continue, please. I mean, I've... No one interrupted you in your talk. I know you probably don't want to hear what I have to say. You don't agree, but I'm gonna continue here.
Is it new information, or what was presented last time? Philobuster 27 of the 35 minutes?
Point of order here, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Everyone's had a chance to talk, and I'd just like to finish my point here on some of these issues with the library.
But it's... But you had... I mean, as a council... I'm not... I'm gonna let you continue.
All right, one last question.
Yep.
Is there any dispute over when the library physically moved into this building? And I'm looking at it as May of 2005. Does anyone disagree that that's the date they physically moved into this building? You don't know? Okay, good enough. I'll stop it there.
No, no, no.
No, that's fine. I mean, it's obvious you guys don't wanna, you know, hear what I have to say, so fine. We'll just leave it at that.
Okay. So, we have a list here of all the options, and to move forward, we need to either have, I would believe, a focus or a...
Task force.
Task force or something.
Yeah, I think there's two things. One is, I think the task force, what are you talking about, long-term uses? In the short term, the six to 18 months, I mean, if... Just to keep the building going, it needs a new roof, and it needs a new HVAC. Those were not in the 2022 budget, and so that budget would have to be amended to do these things. As I said in the prior topic, there's this $340... I don't remember the exact figure, but in the neighborhood of $340,000 in one-time expenditures, that's not enough to pay all of these costs, but that's could be a partial funding source, and that would probably be included when you discuss this on June 21st. I'll also ask Finance Director Winnick to, you know, identify if, in the event that the city council said, you know, "Dan, find us money to do these repairs," where would that come from?
Councilmember Therson, if you could just explain the 2005, the date they moved in, if you could do that? I want to hear your point about the move-in date.
I'm happy to discuss that here, so...
The move-in date.
And the reason I'm bringing this up is 'cause I think it's extremely relevant, the fact that the lease originated on the date they moved in. It didn't start in 2010. It started in 2005. There's a plaque down in the building that says they moved in.
Yep.
So, if it's originally a 20-year lease, and they physically occupied the space in 2005... I mean, and the fact that we lost this contract or whatever, and that's leaked, the attorneys can discuss that, the county can take the stance, yes, we're gonna recognize it as 2010, but they moved in in 2005. I don't think there's any dispute over that, and that's my question I was posing to anyone. Are you saying that they did not move in in 2005, that they only moved in in 2010?
So, I would say that for your own personal point of view, yes, that's when it would start, but our attorney has told us, he's already told us, that this is muddy, that the actual date, because another lease was signed.
And that's why I'm asking these questions, to try to get clarity, 'cause my hope is that we can at least get consensus on some basic, simple facts of, like, this instance, we've got these documents from all three and all four, when they're getting ready to move in. They're talking about the construction costs, they're talking about their build-out and their technology and materials. They took occupancy in 2005.
And I think the relevance is gonna be that meeting next week, talking to the... 'Cause they're gonna have, hopefully, their documents that they have.
I don't know that they're... I don't know what they're prepared to talk about, so I don't wanna give the impression that we're gonna figure this out next week. I just don't know that.
Right. We don't know.
I mean, that's certainly the goal with the county, is to get on the same page.
Yep. To get a consensus between the city and the county in regards to when the end date is for this lease.
Yep.
Get that agreement between the two cities, or between the county and the city. Get that verified, and we can move on from there.
Right. And let's just... Let me just throw out a hypothetical. If we were to meet with the county, and they said, "Well, we've thought about it, and we really like to, you know, increase the size of our footprint there by 50%, and we're willing to invest some money, we're willing to invest X amount of money if you guys are gonna take care of the roof and take care of the building exterior." And in that case, we would sign a lease extension. It's at that lease extension that we could... That all this could become moot. We could say, you know, "The new lease is gonna expire on 2032," or whatever date, and then all of this doesn't really matter anymore in that hypothetical.
Right. And hopefully, we'll know that next week.
Or at least start down that path.
All right, any other discussion on the community center? Not motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? All those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, we are adjourned.